Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger. Ms. Buckley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran? She's trying. Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yep, here.
Mr. O'Tivaria? And Madam Chair?
Present. Um, um. The flag you can see over my shoulder, can we all recite the Pledge of Allegiance in unison? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Um, can we swear in the professionals, please?
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Is Mr. Barlow present?
Uh, I am standing in for Mr. Barlow tonight. He has a conflict on this application, Madam Chair. Hello.
Okay, thank you. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Could you recite the open public meetings notice, please, sir?
Yes, this meeting of the Piscataway Township Planning Board is authorized under the Open Public Meetings Act. It is a remote meeting only under the guidelines established by the Department of Community Affairs, and we have authorization to go forward.
Thank you. And are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. The agenda will proceed as it's written. Uh, may I have a motion to, uh, pay the duly authorized or the duly audited bills, please? Would one of the board members please make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay the duly audited bills.
Do I have a second?
Carol Saunders, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ma- Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item eight, uh, we have no resolutions tonight, so I'll move on to item eight, uh, item nine on the agenda. Uh, Ms. Saunders? Um, item number nine, adoption of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Uh, y- yes, Madam Chair. I, I like to memorialize the me- minutes from the last meeting. Sorry, my, my phone is echoing bad.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Second, Councilwoman Cahill.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Thank you, yes. Item number ten tonight is twenty-five PB zero-two, Rivercrest Point LLC. Kevin Morse, appearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Morse, attorney in Woodbridge, New Jersey. I am appearing on behalf of the applicant, Rivercrest Point LLC. The subject property is block seven-three-zero-five, lots nineteen-point-oh-one, twenty and twenty-one, commonly known as four-fifty River Crest Drive, fifty-one-sixty, fifty-one-seven Orchard Street in Piscataway. Uh, lot nineteen, oh, nineteen-point-oh-one is owned by the Rivercrest Cabana Club, and lots twenty and twenty-one are owned by the Township of Piscataway. The applicant is presently a purchaser under contract, uh, with respective owners of those subject properties. Uh, the proposal before you. Uh, we have lot nineteen-oh-one, again, commonly known as the Rivercrest Cabana Swim Club. Uh, lots twenty-twenty-one are presently vacant. They surround, are surrounded by lot nineteen-point-oh-one. And, uh, the intention is to, uh, remove all the existing structures, the two swimming pools, the patios, the related structures and improvements, and to construct a, uh, four separate, uh, two-story townhouse buildings, which will each contain, uh, four, uh, two-bedroom units, a total of sixteen units. And these will be age-restrictive townhouse units, uh, which will be offered to the public for sale. Uh, the property is located in the R-ten zone and has been designated by the township as an area in need of redevelopment. The, uh, proposed site plan that is before you, uh, is one that is in conformity with the, uh, ordinance and the redevelopment plan, meaning that we do not need... You seek variance relief.
Mm-hmm.
And we're before you requesting preliminary and final site plan approval, uh, and any other relief that the board may deem necessary. My screen seems to have gone blank. I don't know if you can see me.
We can see you.
We can see you. You're looking good there.
All right, I appear to be back. Erin Keystroke. Uh, before I proceed, I did submit our affidavits of publication and mailing, uh, via overnight delivery. I just wanted to make sure that they were received in an order so the board has jurisdiction to proceed on our application tonight.
They were received, they are in order, and the board has jurisdiction to go forward.
Right, so I have, uh, three, uh, witnesses available to me. I have Mr. Michael Lombardi, who's a representative of the applicant. I don't intend on calling him, uh, unless we need to. I believe all the testimony from my engineer and architect will cover, uh, the, uh, application, but I just wanted to let you know that he is available. I will also have Les Walker, who is our professional engineer, and then finally, uh, Roger Winkle, who is our licensed architect. So if I would be permitted to call my first witness, I would call Les Walker at this time.
You may do, you may do so.
Mr. Walker, present?
He is. Yeah, I'm right here.
Mr. Walker, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Uh, Les Walker, uh, and, uh, our address is eleven-ninety-nine Amboy Avenue, um, in Edison, and that is, uh, the location of Meridian Engineering, my, my company.
Thank you.
Right now, Mr. Walker, you're a licensed professional engineer of the state of New Jersey. My understanding, since two thousand and four, and your license is currently in good standing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Walker's credentials are well-known to this board. He has been accepted as an expert in his field on numerous prior occasions before this board on various different applicants. And I would ask that you accept him as our expert with regard to professional engineering without him having to further detail his credentials.
No objection.
Thank you. Right now, Mr. Walker, you, uh, your firm prepared the engineering site plans that are before the board this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, I would ask you to describe the site as it presently exists generally, and then the proposed development of the property by the applicant.
Okay. You should be able to see a colorized version of the site plan with the, like, a, an aerial photo behind it. Is that, can you see that?
Yes, we can. Was that submitted with the package?
It was submitted, um, it was submitted to, uh, our, uh, electronically.
Uh, the colorized version was?
The, yes, that's, that's correct.
Then it does not need to be separately marked?
There's this one, it, there's this one that shows the, the aerial behind it, and then I'll have a zoomed-in version that, that you'll be able to see a lot better. Uh, but just for, just for context and to, to kind of describe where we are, um, I thought this one would be useful.
If it was part of the original package, it doesn't need to be marked?
Yeah, this would, this would be marked. This would, this would be, I guess, A-one.
Okay, A-one with today's date, please.
Okay. So, um, so the, the site is, uh, located at, uh, it's lots nineteen-point-oh-one, twenty and twenty-one in block seventy-three-oh-five, located at four-fifty River Crest Drive, Piscataway. Um, as Kevin, uh, mentioned, it's the, the site of the existing River Crest Cabana Club. Um, it is, uh, falls under a recently adopted redevelopment plan called the River Crest Cabana Club Redevelopment Plan, adopted as ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five in April of this year. It's a two-point-two-two-five acre parcel. It has frontage on River Crest Drive, which runs across the bottom, and Orchard Street, which you can't see, but Orchard Street's a paper street that runs up there. Uh, north is, north is up on, on the plan, so it runs down that, the right side, which is east. Um, it's a paper street, undeveloped, um, but that's Orchard Street. Uh, the existing swim club was built in nineteen-sixty, uh, and include, it includes, uh, two pools, several small, um, support buildings, and a gravel parking area. It's, uh, bordered, um, again, Riverside Drive on the, the south, and across the street is, uh, Kanakamak, uh, Middle School. Um, to the, to the west, or the left, plan left, is, uh, Nye Court, which is, um, uh, six single-family homes. Um, to the north is undeveloped, and then to the east, um, plan right, is the, um, it's, it's a, the Aviate at Piscataway. It's our, it's a, um, residential, um, physical rehabilitation, uh, building, three stories, and that's a commercial building to our, um, east. Uh, property generally slopes from the northeast, uh, top right of the plan, um, to southeast, bottom left of the plan. Now, I'll switch over to one you can actually see a little bit better. That would be... This one. I'll zoom in a little bit more. This would be A-two. It's basically the same exact drawing, but without the aerial and, and up at a, a more visible, um, scale.
A-two.
So, this is A-two. Um, so, again, across the bottom is, is River Crest Drive. Um, you can see there's, there's four identical, um, townhouse buildings proposed, um, with a, um, with a, a central parking lot. Currently, River Crest Drive, um, is at, at the dead end, or the, the end of it here. There is a driveway that goes over towards the, the rehabilitation, um, property. And then there's a driveway to the south that goes into the, it's, I think it's a, a teacher's lot behind that, the middle school. Uh, but it's, it's, it's really a, a, you know, functions as almost a dead end, um, with just access to, um, the school, uh, uh, like a, a backdoor entrance, um, from the, the rehabilitation center, and then, uh, uh, to the, the access for the, the gravel parking lot for the, the Cabana Club. The, uh, River Crest Drive will be, uh, fully improved on the, uh, the applicant's side, the north side, with sidewalk, um, right-of-way dedication, uh, curb, um, and, and, um, you know, curb and, and full-depth pavement. Um, on the, we are proposing to, in order to bring this, this road up to some sort of a standard, um, the cartway on the rest of, uh, River Crest is, uh, thirty-six feet wide. Um, so we are proposing to kind of straighten out the sideline on the other, the other side, towards, um, towards the south there, towards the, the middle school. Um, it kind of meanders, that, that side kind of meanders in and out, and we're, you know, going to remove a little, a little section of, of kind of failing pavement, and then widen, widen to make it a full, um, thirty-six-foot cartway, um, for the entire stretch in front of us. Um, and then the, the entire, um, where, where it's, um, uh, there's no existing pavement. It would be new full-depth. And then everywhere else, uh, as long as the, the, uh, road is in, uh, subgrades in good enough condition, it'd be a mill and overlay, so that, so that it, it functions and looks like a, um, completely new roadway. Um, as, as, um, our attorney mentioned, that each, each of these units is four two-bedroom, um, townhouses, age-restricted. Um, the parking lot in the middle has thirty-eight proposed parking stalls. Um, three of those are ADA, and five of those are, uh, electric vehicle parking stations. Um, and all, um, meets or exceeds, uh, the requirements of the ordinance. Sidewalks will be proposed, um, to, to, for access between the parking and to all of the units. Um, some of the units have, uh, frontage on the, the, or the, like, the main front doors on the front of the building, and then some are on the back of the building, um, because it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, symmetrical all the way around. Um, the units on the, the top or the bottom, uh, the, the doors on the top or the bottom of each one of these buildings, um, plan, plan top and bottom are like a side door, not the, not the main front door, but, but they're like a side secondary, um, egress point. Sidewalks will be connected also out to the, the proposed sidewalk along River Crest Drive for, um, full connectivity for pedestrians. Um, the, um, the refuse enclosure, um, is in the back of the parking lot. Um, it'll, it'll, you know, be sufficient to, um, to house the, the refuse and the recycling from, from the sixteen units. And, you know, the, the, um, pickup will, will have to, you know, be scheduled kind of as, as needed, once a week at minimum. Um, but if, if, um, you know, the, I would imagine it'll be a homeowners association, since it'll all be owned, um, they would have to, you know, adjust if, if they felt that, um, a, a more frequent, uh, pickup, you know, twice a week or something, provides, um, the, the right, um, the right timing and, and a cleaner, um, a, a, you know, so that there's not, you know, trash left in, in the front or outside of the bins. Um, the site, the site will be fully, um, fully, um, lighted. Um, LED lights, um, in the parking lot, um, on fourteen-foot poles, so they're not, they're not, like, uh, overwhelming and, and, uh, you know, obnoxious, all dark sky compliant. Um, and, uh, in, in a lantern-style, you know, look to them. So, so they're, they're, you know, at, at the right scale and, and the right height for this kind of a development. Not, uh, not what you would find at like a, you know, like a Walmart parking lot, like, big, tall, you know, commercial-looking lights. These are more decorative and, and a smaller scale. Um, bollards, bollard lighting will be provided kind of between the buildings and, and around the buildings in, you know, s- you know, certain spots, just to make sure that at nighttime, like, there's, there's enough light to, to see if you're walking, and, and your doors in the back, whatever. Uh, but not to be, you know, obtrusive and, and, you know, shining people's windows. Uh, there is a, a proposed monument sign. It kind of hides at the bottom of the plan here, uh, under this tree. You can see my mouse moving. Um, that's where, that's where there'll be a sign. It's, uh, five feet by five feet, twenty-five, um, square feet per side. Um, it will have, um, some, some landscaping around the base as, uh, requested by the township. Um, you know, some, some decorative landscaping and nothing that would block the sign, but to, to make it a little bit more than, um, more than just a sign, a little bit, uh, you know, nicer to look at. Uh, but that'll, that'll identify the project, um, the exact, you know, the exact language that'll be on it. Something like, you know, River Crest Point Townhouses or River Crest, you know, something like that, and that'll be designed and, uh, um, yeah, at a later time, but, but it'll be twenty-five square feet and two, and two-sided. There are approximately currently eighty-five trees on site. Uh, a total of thirty-nine are coming down. Um, those are in the area of the existing pool, um, you know, kind of around that, so in the middle of the site where, where, you know, some of the buildings are going. And then at the bottom right-hand corner, where that, the woods on Orchard Street kind of wrap around it and, and end up in front of, in front of, uh, that bottom right townhouse, um, so that we can get the sidewalks and pub, the public sidewalk and, and the sidewalk connection in there. There's a, there's a handful of trees out there that have come down. In, in, uh, placement of those, um, uh, thirty-nine trees that are coming down, we are proposing, uh, forty-nine trees, and that number's going to change. I'll explain in a minute. Uh, but currently, that the plan shows forty-nine trees, um, to, for, for, um, yeah, to, to replace those trees. Um, so, so, uh, and in addition, um, around the buildings, uh, there's, you know, a, a very nice, uh, foundation plantings with shrubs, um, and perennial plants, um, so it'll be very, a very attractive-looking, um, development. Um, there will be more trees than forty-nine. I believe the number, uh, I, I don't know the exact number, but it goes up a bit. Uh, we've been looking at the, the review letters, uh, from the professionals, and that's going to generate some, some additional trees. And those additional trees are shown on the plan that you're looking at now. So this is enhanced with those additional trees. So you can see, street trees across the front, some smaller, more ornamental decorative, um, trees in and around the buildings, and then, um, some, uh, some additional trees around the top where it's, it's kind of open to the, the, the Texas Eastern, uh, Transmission Line property and the property, undeveloped property to the north, um, where there's really no trees in that, that immediate vicinity, um, but out of the easement, uh, so, so on our side of, of the, you know, the right, the correct side of, of the easement line. And then some additional along the left-hand side, um, towards the existing single families. Um, the, the woods that are there are proposed to, to remain the woods, woods line there. Um, but where there's some, some gaps and, and some, you know, some less, less, uh, dense areas, uh, you know, we're, we're showing some trees to be kind of, kind of field-fit where, uh, where it would be appropriate, uh, to give them a little better screening. So, um, s- stormwater management is fully compliant with, with the current New Jersey stormwater rules, and including, you know, the year twenty-one-hundred analysis, uh, green, green infrastructure, um, and, uh, in, and rate reductions. Um, the, the parking lot, um, runs down to, uh, runs down to... A little bit more. Um, right where this tree is and right where this tree is, underneath those is, is what's called a filterra. And that's a, a, like, a, a, it's a struc- concrete structure, like an inlet. But in the top of it, there's, there's a, a planting medium for, uh, for a tree, for a small tree. It has to be certain trees that, 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 um, thrive in these conditions. So the water, the water from the parking lot will, will come down, go to the two inlets on either side, and then back into these structures where, you know, the, the first layer is mulch, and any garbage or debris that washes off the parking lot is, is, lays on top of the mulch, and then it goes through like a sand media underneath before it gets to an underdrain, and then goes to the under, underground detention basin. And that really provides, and, and they're certified, uh, by NJDEP to provide, um, at minimum eighty percent, uh, TSS removal. And so that meets the, the, the standard. Um, you can see kind of in the middle of the parking lot, under the parking lot is where our, um, uh, stormwater management, um, pipe system will be under, under the parking lot with an outlet control structure. In, uh, uh, manholes on either side where, um, where the, uh, the water from, uh, these, these, uh, the tree boxes will filter back into the system. And then also at the top, all the roof leaders from, from the, the buildings will come into the underground system. That is considered by DEP to be clean water, um, so it can go right into the system. And then, and then what the underground detention basin does is it, is it slows down the rate of, of, uh, of water leaving the site uh, to meet those required fifty percent, uh, twenty-five percent, twenty percent, um, reductions for the two-ten and one-hundred-year storms, uh, respectively. Um, water will then, the, 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 the grassy areas behind the buildings will come down to some, some yard inlets, and, um, then the, the detention basin comes out to that same, on a manhole, to that same system. And then it comes down to the corner of the property, and it meets the existing, uh, municipal system that is just at our south, the, the southwest corner of our property where, where we meet, uh, River Crest. Um, runoff, the runoff rate, uh, from our site is reduced. So what, what was getting to that inlet before from this property will be lessened by, uh, the, the, uh, proposed improvements. And certainly, the quality of the water is going to be significantly, uh, improved, because right now, it's just a, you know, it's a large, you know, probably two-thirds of an acre gravel parking lot, and, and if you look at, you know, you go out there, you can see some, some silt staining in the parking lot from water that just is uncontrolled, running off a gravel parking lot down the street. So, uh, so stormwater is handled. Um, and that's really, uh, all I have on the, the plans themselves. Um, I did review the, the professionals', uh, reports.
Well, Mr. Walker, before we get into that, just a couple of quick questions for you. Just, uh, based, based upon the testimony you just produced with regard to the, uh, stormwater management drainage, will this proposed development by the applicant have any negative impact on adjacent or neighboring properties with regard to drainage or stormwater management?
None at all. It's all going to be positive.
All right, now, with regard to the improvements that you mentioned, uh, regarding the, uh, roadway, uh, which will, uh, improve to a, a two-way street based upon township standards, including sidewalks. Uh, overall, will that improvement that's being done, uh, in connection with this application, uh, represent an overall improvement for both vehicular traffic and public safety compared to what exists, uh, in front of us right now?
Yeah, absolutely, because it'll be a, a full, the full thirty-six, uh, foot-wide cartway that the rest of River Crest Drive has, and it's going to have, um, sidewalk that connects, um, a little bit off-site to the east there, to the end of the sidewalk, um, that, that comes from Nye Court, and it's going to extend that across the frontage of our property.
Right, now, with regard to the, a waiver for the need for any type of traffic impact statement, I understand, uh, do you have an opinion as, in your expertise, is whether this proposed sixteen age-restricted units, will they have any appreciable impact on, uh, traffic at the surrounding area?
Uh, no, I, I, I don't believe there's going to be a, any noticeable, uh, change in traffic. Um, there, the, you know, you're, in, in the summertime, I would imagine that, that the swim club can, you know, get a, get a pretty good crowd on, on any day. Um, so you would have a lot of, uh, daytime traffic. Um, you know, you're talking about sixteen age-restricted units, so, you know, I, I just, just last month, uh, two weeks ago, I am officially old enough to move into a fifty-five and older community. So, um, you're talking about, you know, uh, professionals that are, you know, their, their kids are, you know, their, their kids are, um, uh, grown, and, you know, maybe it's just mom and dad are left and they want to downsize, have a little less responsibility for, for maintenance. Um, although they don't need the big house anymore, you know, so it could be a, a, a professional, you know, professionals that are later in life. Uh, or it could be retired people, and, you know, they, we, um, we don't function on, at the, the, the same, uh, the same bandwidth that, that younger crowds and you might find at a, a traditional apartment or townhouse, uh, complex that would have, you know, families and younger people. Um, so I would imagine that, that this, uh, this, uh, is not going to, you know, uh, prove any negative impact on the surrounding streets.
All right, now, with regard, we'll, we'll go through each memo individually, but generally, I understand you took a look based upon some of the review comments generally. And I just want you to confirm that, in fact, you've determined there are no discrepancies with any of the setbacks, and that the proposed, uh, site plan before the board is, uh, in conformity with the township's zoning ordinance and the redevelopment standards, and therefore that no variance relief is required. We are, in fact, the conforming site plan. Is that true?
That is true. So, so, um, there was a, there was a question about the front yard versus the side yard. Uh, we called the River Crest Drive as the front yard and put the rear yard as, uh, back at the, at the top there by, uh, the Texas Eastern Transmission Corps pipeline. Um, and, um, and then the side yard towards, um, you know, towards the Orchard Street right-of-way and towards the, the backyard of, um, the, the homes on Nye Court. Um, the, the, uh, planning memo, uh, calls out, calls that out opposite, that these, they, their rear yard would be actually, um, to the, to the left, um, or to the right, and that the, uh, the front, the, the, uh, side yard would be, uh, you know, to the top of the plan. But either way, uh, we, we have over sixty feet in, in both directions, and the requirement for the side or the rear yard is only twenty-five feet, and our minimum is over sixty feet.
Mr. Boris, this is Ron Reiner, it's just, it, it's just-
Mr. Boris, this is Ron Reiner. It's just, it, it's just a technical item. The redevelopment plan defines the rear yard where our, you know, it's, it's specifically o- opposite or, or the Orchard map street. That's what it says. It's by nine. That's what we went by.
No, 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 we comply.
Regardless, we're compliant.
No, no, that, you absolutely comply. So I mean, it was just a sort of board knows that was a technical item. It was really uh redevelopment plan specific on this one. Little oddball thing.
All right. So uh now uh, Mr. Walker, we had a chance. There's four review memos that have been produced to us. We'll, we'll, we'll just talk about them very briefly one at a time. First, there was a review memo dated Ju- July eighth of twenty twenty-five. That was issued by the Township uh Department of Engineering, Planning and Development. That's the staff memo. We had the opportunity to review uh all the items in that memo with the applicant. Is that correct?
That's right.
And I understand that we will be able to comply with all of the requests, you believe, to the satisfaction of the uh board professionals. Is that right?
Yeah, I think the only exception would be I don't believe there are any affordable housing units proposed. So twelve and thirteen, comments twelve and thirteen would not apply, but the rest of it is, is certainly will comply fully.
Well, certainly whatever is required, affordable or not, the applicant is prepared to required uh with that, that is required by law. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right. Now, and then just one item in that memo. There was a request for some uh per- perhaps for some recreational amenities. And we'll just place on the record, the applicant is prepared to uh install some raised flower beds and a few benches. It's a rel- relatively small development, but uh he would agree to provide those amenities. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked about uh providing some benches, you know, around, you know, kind of around the, the perimeter sidewalk. Um, and then uh, yeah, I believe uh, you know, if, if the, the township was looking for more, um, you know, maybe find, find a couple of locations for some raised um like, like little beds that they could garden in, you know, if there's somebody who had that as a hobby or something like that. Um, but yeah, we'll work with staff to, to make sure that, that uh, you know, this will be a, a uh something that the, the township could be proud of.
Okay. And then the next memo that we received was dated July fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. That was issued by Delaware, Delaware Rattan Engineering, which are the planning board engineers. I understand we've had the opportunity to review uh that memo with the applicant as well.
That's right.
And I understand that uh there are no issues with any of the comments in there and the applicant will be able to comply uh with the request in that memo, uh you believe to the uh board engineer satisfaction. Is that correct?
That's right. Fully comply.
Okay. Next, there's a review memo dated July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five issued by SEMI Associates. Uh, they are the planning board planners. Uh, not, uh, we reviewed that together with the applicant also, correct, Mr. Walker?
That's right.
And uh generally I believe we could comply with the recommendations. There is one item in particular, however. And while I understand the nature of the comment, we have thirty-eight parking spaces. Rarely do I come in front of the board where I actually have a few extra parking spaces. Often we're trying to just reach compliance, but in this case, we're over by a couple of spaces and there's a comment uh that we could reduce or eliminate some of the parking spaces. Uh, but in reviewing this, I understand with the applicant, uh it would be our position that there's always a benefit to a few extra spaces. It's not obtrusive to the development. And we would ask the board to confirm, uh it would be our request that we do not reduce the thirty-eight parking spaces uh that are currently depicted on the plan. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just to confirm, we don't want you to reduce it. It's this, it's this situation with RSIS being changed two years ago. Where they went from parking minimums to parking maximums. And if you go over by a couple, it's just, it's really an FYI comment. And it really is a state standard. So as long as you, you know, that's why we defer to the township for the interpretation. I still haven't heard back from DCA on how to handle this.
Well, we appreciate the comment uh and the fact, I gather you have no objection to the thirty-eight remaining. Is that right?
Uh, absolutely not.
Okay. And then the last memo we have is uh dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-five. That was issued by the Department of Public Works. I think it had to do with just a specific required fitting, but the applicant reviewed that and is prepared to comply with that request as well. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I, the, Mike, the copy of the letter that I have is dated February eleventh, but yeah, it's.
I think it's, I think it's July eleventh. It's, I think it's just a, a zip in the handwriting because it refers to. Um, but in any event, we'll, we'll comply with that.
Fully comply. That's right.
All right. So look, uh, that would, I, I believe conclude uh Mr. Walker's testimony. If there are questions from the board or any of the board professionals or, or staff, we would certainly invite them now. I think we've covered everything, but we're happy to field any questions you may have.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness?
Uh, um, Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill. Um, I don't know, uh, I better ask first. This is just the plan. Is there going to be, Mr. Moore, someone on who's going to talk about the actual structures, the designs, the color scheme, what it's going to look like?
Yes, my next witness will be our, our architect, Mr. Winkle, who will be able to field those questions and will present some testimony.
Um, also, so maybe just one, uh, um, maybe not a question, but a point. Um, the, these buildings do not have any garages, correct?
That's my understanding.
No, okay. And so recently Middlesex County implemented new recycling bins. Uh, probably when you were developing this plan, you didn't become aware that um that is becoming an issue for folks who have no place to store them. They are ninety-five gallon bins. And so the county is going to be looking for uh spaces for developments such as this that do not have a garage where people can perhaps store that. Um, for them to include a uh, maybe a space where everyone can put their ninety-five gallon uh container. And that will have to, that, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. We, we do have an application filed with Middlesex County Planning Board, so um, I would imagine that, that we would be hearing from them soon. So, you know, we'll certainly accommodate, uh, you know, whatever, whatever it is they need. I can't imagine that, that, you know, a, a senior couple, you know, somebody my age or older is going to be, you know, generating ninety-five gallons worth of recycling every, you know, every week, but um we'll certainly comply with.
Oh, that's the only choice they have. The barrel is not a choice. They don't, we no longer in Middlesex County have an option of putting little bins out that separate corrugate from bottles.
Right, but this would be, this would be private pickup.
So even recycling is private pickup?
I would imagine, yes, that, that this would be private uh trash and recycling.
Now, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, that uh, that's done through the county MCIA. It's not private. The town pays for the uh uh recycling pickup through the MCIA.
Yeah, maybe garbage will be private pickup because we pay for our own garbage, but the county.
The gar- regular gar- household trash garbage is private, but the county uh recycling is paid through the town.
Yeah. And this is all very new because this was just implemented as of like the first week of August. And it was uh calls that not only the county was receiving, but certainly the mayor's office were receiving with uh folks who have no garages, no places to store such a large bin. Uh, you know, so that's a, that's gonna have to be taken into consideration. Regardless of whatever the county approves, that's going to have to be taken into consideration for this plan as to where they're going to be stored. If there's no shed, no garage, where are you keeping it?
Yeah, this is, this is Dawn, I, Dawn Corpren. I was just wondering though, do you know whether or not, I mean, if they have a designated recycling area next to the, the refuse, is, is that acceptable? Like, is the county?
Oh, it's not that it's, I, I, I have no idea. All I know is every resident, so these are four sale units. Um, is getting a recycling bin that's a ninety-five gallon bin. So if they all can be stored in there, that's fine. In a common recycling area. I just don't know how that will work without any kind of storage for the resident here.
On this plan, Les, is it just strictly that you have it, the, the enclosures for um refuse only, or is that also designated for recycling? Do you have both?
We were, we were pictured, yeah, we were envisioning uh, uh, one, one uh, uh, I, I believe there's six, six or eight yard um, you know, dumpster for refuse and then the same for recycling.
Right.
Uh, co-megal recycling. But, I mean, it, it's certainly, I, I believe that the pad is, is uh the enclosure's ten by twenty, so there's certainly um room in there. But if, if they, if this, this county mandate is gonna, gonna require them to have sixteen individual bins, it seems excessive, but um certainly we'll, we'll, we'll work it out. If we need to widen the pad or something, or we'll work it out with, with.
Yeah, they have a special truck, so it's less manpower now. It's, you know, like what they've, a lot of people do with garbage trucks too, right? Uh, in my individual home, uh, like if I had midco or waste management, they don't have a guy picking up that barrel anymore. It's a side. You know, it's kind of like that side loader thing that picks up the barrel and dumps it in.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we have, we have that here where I am too. It just, I'm just trying to picture sixteen individual units rolled out to the curb, you know, it, it's just.
Something you might want to, yeah, you might, you might want to consider it because uh it, you know, those, those are big blue barrels. And I don't think for an, from an aesthetic point of view, you want them all hanging out.
Yeah, right. Okay, okay. We'll uh, we'll look into that and, and see what we.
Right. Um, and I, I, I guess this is really all we can afford with parking spaces. I mean, I know it's not required for you to have more, but you know, is there parking on Rivercrest? Do we know that, Dawn, uh, in case folks are entertaining, you know, have two cars in a household?
Everybody, every third, we, we allotted for two cars per unit plus six additional spaces. So there are six for visitors or delivery, but certainly if, if many of these people were, were, you know, entertaining Christmas dinner and, and the whole family came for a visit, that's when you would, you know, potentially, you know, look, be looking at the, the potential of people parking along the street.
Yeah, so that's my question. Do we know if there's going to be parking allowed on that? I mean, I don't think we have no parking up there designated now.
I agree. I don't believe we have no parking.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any um, uh, any other questions from this, this witness before we call the next witness? Um, I believe we should open it up to the public before we go to the next witness. Ms. Buckley?
You have to open it, Madam Chair.
Members of the public, if you have a question of this witness, uh, would you please indicate by a show of hands on your computer?
Uh, hold on a second.
There's someone on an iPhone.
Okay.
It says iPhone three.
iPhone three, could you identify yourself?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Could you identify yourself?
Uh, Ed Marsh.
Your address, please.
One, one, three Wyckoff Avenue, Piscataway.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, first a comment. I had trouble with uh finding the link, excuse me, the link to get on the meeting and I had to ask a friend. So I wanted to mention that. Uh, the parking is a concern, you know, it doesn't sound like there's.
Madam Chairwoman, is this a time for questions or comments?
Uh, this is, uh, he can ask a question.
Thank you. Um, I guess I don't have a question at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone else in the public would like to ask questions of this witness only in his testimony? Would you please indicate by a show of hands on your computer?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Closed to the public for this witness.
All right, then I would ask uh Mr. Walker to stand down. He will of course remain uh with us in ti- in case questions come up during the remainder of this hearing. And I would next call Mr. Roger Winkle, who is our architect.
Thank you.
Mr. Winkle, are you present? Mr. Winkle?
I think he's muted.
Mr. Winkle, could you unmute, unmute? Mr. Winkle, can you hear us? Mr. Winkle, can you unmute, unmute?
I should be.
You, yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Uh, Roger Charles Winkle, nine forty-seven Park Avenue, Plainfield.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Winkle, I understand that you have been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-one and your license is currently in good standing. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Right, Madam Chair. When Mr. Winkle uh credentials are, I think, believed known to the board. He's uh been testifying for a long time and he has been previously accepted before this board on prior occasions as an expert in his field. I'm going to ask that you accept him uh as the applicant's expert, architectural expert, without the need to go uh into further detail uh of his qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Winkle is acceptable.
Thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. Winkle, you prepared the architectural plans that are before the board this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And I also understand that you have, uh, we have two uh dimensional, three-dimensional uh color renderings. I think the first one was, was placed up earlier for demonstrative purposes. I believe that the A three, Mr. K. Uh, so I would ask you, while that rendering is up, uh, to describe the townhouse buildings that are proposed by this applicant.
Yeah, well, this is a, a rendering of the proposed townhouse buildings. Um, it basically depicts everything on my drawings. Uh, but it, it, it goes into the colors and um if we could, I'd rather go through the presentation of the plans and elevations and then get back to the rendering and talk about the, the colors and the materials.
Okay, so why don't we start with that then?
Okay. So um, this is a sheet A one. It is the uh first floor plan. Uh, as uh mentioned, these, this project is for four fourplex buildings. Each one of these buildings has four units, four two-bedroom units. Uh, the floor plan for each unit is basically the same for each of the four, only maybe mirrored or left or right. Uh, the units themselves are sixty feet, four inches wide and sixty feet, four inches deep. Uh, total square footage of each floor is thirty-six forty, three thousand six hundred and forty. The square footage of each unit is nine hundred and ten per floor. And so we are proposing two floors plus a full basement. And the basement would have be the same nine hundred and ten floor, nine hundred and ten square feet. Uh, but it'll be unfinished. It will only have um the, the utilities and storage space. And that's how the units will be sold. The um, the buyers will have the uh, the option to finish their basements at a later time. And but that would require uh permits and uh at a later time. So if we look at the first floor plan, the, the actual entrances are on the left and the right of this drawing. So you would come up the steps, enter the front door and you'd be at a um, the foyer hallway. The stair would be to the right or the left. And on either the right or the left is the dining room. And on the opposite side of the dining room is an office space. The office space is in the outside corner to get additional. The office space is in the outside corner to get additional light. If you, if you go down the hallway, you come to the rear of the unit, and there is an open family room kitchen. That, the family room is fourteen feet wide by seventeen feet deep, and the kitchen fourteen feet by eleven-four. So it's a large open space. Additionally, on the, on the first floor, next to the office, between the office and the family room, there's the coat closet and a half bath. Again, each unit is the same. The entrance is on the left side and the right side, and there's an additional sliding glass door off the family room that, that goes to the exterior walkways. If we go to sheet two, which is the second floor, you'll see when you get up, when you get up to stair to the second floor, there is a, a small hallway space. And out of that hallway, you can enter either the master bedroom or the secondary bedroom. The master, which is toward the interior of the, the units, uh, is sixteen-ten by fifteen-four, a fairly large bedroom. It has its own master bath, and it has a walk-in, separate walk-in closet. Going back out into the hallway and enter the secondary bedroom. That bedroom is fifteen feet by ten foot two, and that also has a walk-in closet. It does not have its own separate bath, but there is a second bathroom and a laundry room and linen closet in that, off of that hallway. So basically, the second floor, two bedrooms, two baths, and a laundry room. If we go to the next sheet, which is the, this is the front elevation and the rear elevation. And that, that was based on, uh, looking at the site plan, having the front and the rear. You'll see that we've tried to break up this, the elevation to be much more interesting with the double gable on each side of the, the second floor. And, and the hip roofs going back uh, to make it more interesting. When you, if you look to the very top and you see the, um, the gable coming out on each side, on the left and the right, those are dormers that we've designed into the roof, which you would see on, on the next plan when we get, when we get to that plan. That's, that was done to, to make the aesthetics of, of the side elevations much more interesting and attractive. The materials are going to be cultured stone along, uh, the bottom, and then basically vinyl siding around the rest of the exterior. Standard shingle roofing. And if you look between the first and second floor, you'll see that we have a roof overhang that wraps along the entire building. This is to break up the elevation into more, uh, more smaller spaces rather than a long, uh, two-story wall of, of just of siding. Okay, if we go to the next sheet, A four, this is a typical side elevation, but this is the front, this is the entry elevation. So this, uh, this elevation would face the parking lot. And these two units that face the parking, that would be the entrance door with the, uh, the hip roof and the dormers in the third floor or in the attic space. Now, they're, those are just decorative. The, um, the attic is only used for utility space. And basically, that's the only reason for the attic. The materials are the same along all four elevations. And the, the height of the entire structure is thirty-four feet, six inches. Now, if we go to the rendering.
Think we marked that as A three? Yes, A three, okay.
Okay, the rendering is, uh, depicts the same thing that we have on our, uh, our plan. The, um, we're proposing to do the building in, uh, white and a dark gray or, well, not black, but it would be a dark gray roofing material. And the, and the stone baseline would be cultured stone, most likely a tan or tannish brown. The, the, the only thing, the rendering that isn't correct on the rendering is that the parking lot is not on this particular side. The parking lot is on the, um, the opposite side, which, and the rendering is on the right side. But basically, this is how it would look.
Right, so if I can confirm a couple of things with you, Mr. Winkle. Number one, all the townhouse buildings conform to the maximum allowable height requirements in the zone, is that correct?
That is correct.
In fact, the townhouse buildings otherwise comply. Uh, they're totally in conformity with the, uh, township's zoning ordinance as well as the redevelopment plan, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, with regard just to the units, I understand uh, each of the units will have central air conditioning uh, with individual typical outdoor residential compressor units, is that correct?
It is.
And other than that, the rest of the mechanicals will be, uh, inside the structures, either in the basement or in the attic, if it's one or two zones for HVAC, is that correct?
That's correct. Um, right now, the, the basement, the only thing in the basement would be hot water heater and, and a furnace. And then up in the attic would be, uh, the, uh, the air blower and possibly a second furnace.
Okay, and just to confirm, these are all standalone individual units, and there are no common rooms, common communal areas, uh, in any of these four buildings, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and now, in particular, with regard to the, uh, your testimony on the architectural features, I mean, the applicant has taken great pains with all these roofline cuts and gables, uh, uh, to add some architectural, uh, diversity and some flair as opposed to just four simple, uh, uh, strip roof lines, is that correct?
Definitely correct.
And the board should be aware, this, by doing that with all these additional cuts and gables, that's actually much more expensive to construct a structure that way than just having, uh, two peak roof lines, is that correct?
Much more expensive.
Right, but the applicant is prepared to do that because the applicant, uh, seeking to proceed uh, with the buildings that do have this architectural, even though, uh, flare, even though it costs much more to construct them with all these fancy roof cuts and gables and so forth, is that accurate?
That's accurate. Of course, the applicant would want to produce something that aesthetically pleasing would definitely be more rentable also.
Okay, well, these are for sale, but a, a, from an architectural perspective, uh, do you believe that this type of building, as you've designed it, uh, does in fact produce that architectural diversity flavor and is more visually appealing than, uh, what otherwise might be constructed in a typical townhouse unit?
I would say yes, yes.
Okay, very well. I have no further questions of Mr. Winkle at this time, if there are questions from members of the board, the staff, or the professionals.
Thank you. Um, members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Winkle?
I have a question. This is Mr. Atkins.
Okay.
Will there be? Will there be firewalls in between each unit?
Yes, a two-hour firewall.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, if, I was gonna defer if anyone else, any of the professionals have questions. If not, I'm ready to go.
To go?
To ask my questions.
Go ahead. Ask your question, please.
Plural. Um, so a couple of things. On the, let me start with.
For the record, this is Councilwoman Cahill.
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry, Councilwoman Cahill. Um, a couple of things on the architectural design. Let's start, um, with what is the front doors. I see that the front doors, um, I don't know, we don't have to go back to that screenshot, but the front doors also have this sort of sidewalk up and stoop. Why aren't they just coming forward like normal sort of homes would have?
When we, when we first designed them, I wasn't quite sure, uh, how high we would be. Uh, it, it appears from the site plan that we might be able to straighten them out. We didn't, I didn't think we had enough room to come directly forward with the stair.
I mean, just architecturally speaking, it looks like a side door or it looks like, um, you know, more like an apartment complex with that look. I just think architecturally speaking, it, it's, uh, doesn't give presence to the front of the door. It looks like a side entrance. So those are just my opinion, my opinion on that piece.
Councilwoman Cahill, if I could chime in, we might have to scooch the buildings back a hair, you know, a couple of feet from the parking lot, but we could certainly, um, accommodate moving, turning the porch aside raise. Um, and the buildings will still be in a, in a location that's fully compliant with zoning.
Right, right. And then, um, although I know that the entrances don't have to be ADA compliant, I should, probably should have asked this of you earlier, Mr. Walker. On the sidewalks and everything that's leading around the complex, they will be compliant with, uh, the ADA corners on, in any spots?
Yeah, from, access from the parking lot, um, and around the buildings is.
Okay, I meant to ask that earlier.
There's no stairs. Yeah, there are, there are two locations where you need a couple of stairs to get from, um, from the, uh, the walkways around the buildings out to the public street. But there's also areas where you can just walk, you know, where the stairs are.
Right, 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 but, um, the way the sidewalks are made in, like, uh, in town, I mean, I, I don't even know, the mayor could chime in on this. Like, uh, the, the common spaces, let's say, between, uh, uh, as I look at the screen on the left, top and bottom building, those little walkways there, uh, I guess they'll all be flat, and then they'll be, um, from the sidewalk that butts up against the parking spots, those blue areas are the handicap accessible, is that where the dip is for like wheelchairs? Right.
Right here, and then, and yeah, and it's all, it's all fully ADA all the way around.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
With the exception of the front stoops.
Right, no, I understand. I know that that does not have to be compliant in that way. Um, then the, uh, I guess one of the other questions I had is, um, well, maybe I should frame this a different way. It, it, was there also some sort of issue with including garages on the site that, that sort of precluded that? I mean, was it just not given any thought because of the design being a box and it being sort of, I mean, you don't have, I guess, no, no access on the outsides there? Is, is that the reason why there's no garages?
I would say, uh, yes, I mean, the, there are townhouse projects that have separate garages, but they're detached, and they're not, they're not, not attached to the units, and then there are.
Well, just talking about a, a, like, townhomes that you might see where there is like one garage, right? And sort of the entrance to the left.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, it just might help with that whole, uh, recycling bin issue, but, um, so that is one of the, that was, uh, sort of a concern of mine without the garage there, but, um, I guess the, uh, and I do have some more, so bear with me, um, board, please. Everyone on this board, maybe not so much of the new ones, know that I'm always the one who nitpicks about design. So, let me back up to then the parking space too. I know that, um, I didn't see the report, but our fire marshals were out there in terms of access for fire trucks with ease of getting in and out.
In a meeting, can't call, can't talk now. Tell you later.
Has it, do we have a report from our fire marshal? I'm talking, I guess, to our team.
Because this is a site plan, it is required to be reviewed by the fire marshal. Um, Laura can confirm if he has approved it. Typically, if he did not, it would be in our packets. But we can get you an answer on that.
Okay, that would be great. And then, um, this, uh, let me back up, is, is this gonna be an HOA? Is there going to be an HOA? Who's, you know, who's digging out the folks parking here in snowstorms? How do we envision all that happening since they don't have like their own driveway? This is a communal parking lot versus driveways with garages? That's a question I have, or actually, I know someone who has that question.
No, I expect, yeah, I expect there will be a homeowners association, uh, in connection with this proposed development for exactly those reasons.
And, um, the utilities, you talked about the attic. So what utilities are going to be in that attic space? And does every individual homeowner have access to the attic that is above their unit?
The attic, the attic space would only have a, a furnace if we, if we have two furnaces per unit, we not sure if we're going to do that yet. Plus, it would have an air handler, and the rest, uh, could be attic storage. We can, the, um, the two-hour fire separation walls uh, go from the basement slab all the way up to the top of the ridge of the roof. So we can provide a pull-down access for the unit just for storage.
Um, well, if there's a sec, I mean, if a decision's made for a second furnace. Well, if the, if there's a sec, I mean, if a decision's made for a second furnace, I, I'm not sure what all is involved in that. The resident would need to have access to that, is that correct?
Yeah, and there would be access. And, and the remaining attic space would be used for their storage if they wished.
And, and where are the HVAC units going to be?
One, one furnace in the basement and then this, perhaps a second one in the attic? And you're talking about the condensers?
Uh, yeah, like for air conditioning, things of that nature.
They, they're gonna be on, outside on the side.
Okay.
And those do have to be screened, just so, just for the record, so.
I don't think we got that far on it, right?
They're not, they're not on the plan right now, but when these do come in for their permitting, I will absolutely make sure those units are.
Yeah. I have no doubt of that, Dawn. Uh, and I guess one of the other questions that I had was just generally speaking, and I, I don't want you to take any offenses, Mr. Winkler, you, Mr. Morse, because I know that you were talking, you know, about the interest created with, with the peaks, but as I look at the structure itself, and, and perhaps that's why I'm talking about garages and front door entrance. I'm looking at it, and it looks like the kind of building you would put in the middle of a housing complex, apartments, townhomes. It, it feels to me and appears to me to just look, you know, like a, a box. And I, you know, it doesn't feel like there's a, you know, sort of any home differentiation. There's nothing that's budding out, like with some townhomes, again, a garage might butt out a little bit and created it. It feels to be like, you know, set aside the peaks, which are lovely at the top. But other than that, I mean, I don't, you know, it's my opinion, and I wouldn't know if anyone else agrees with me or not, but I am, been on the board since oh nine, and my biggest suggestion, complaint, whatever you wanna call it, critique of developers when they come into our town is, I don't feel that they create buildings, you know, when it comes to sort of the multi, you know, housing units there that are very interesting and or unique. And, you know, for me, it's, I have a chip on my shoulder because I feel like people come into Piscataway and they're like, well, you're not Matouchin, Bedminster, Cranford, I could name all of them, you know, where we have to be particular about the aesthetic. And I don't believe that the aesthetic, and again, this is not meant to be in any way about someone's taste versus, this is my taste. I don't believe that this aesthetic really is interesting. It looks like a box to me that has some peaks. And I can't differentiate whose space is from another space. And I'm just, I mean, truly, nothing's not against the applicant for doing it because I can understand why. Get as much as you can for as little as you put in. But I'm disappointed that we, as a township, looked at this plan and thought it was okay.
You, Councilwoman, those are valid, this is Ron Ronerson. I think the thing is, and, and I'll stand corrected by Dawn and the others, there's really no design standards within the redevelopment plan that would require a certain type. So my suggestion is, if you're gonna do a redevelopment plan, put the design standards in first. They're coming in with something. And there's no deviations to this.
No, I, I get it. I mean, I, I see the application. As I said, these are my opinions, right, my thoughts. And the mayor knows this about me very much so that I will be the first one on this board to be picky about these things. And I've spoken up before many times at all, and I, I mean, I think it's great use of the space and all that, but I, I mean, as I look at it here, it, it's, you know, again, I'm, pictures here aren't gonna be exactly how we see, but you're looking at a, a space here with a, a table and an umbrella here. It's kind of all open. It doesn't feel like there's any space for privacy here. There's no, hey, this is mine. Like, you look at it like, I, I, I don't know, I just, this is my opinion.
I hear you.
Maybe I'll just have to have that conversation internally that our redevelopment plans are gonna have to include some architectural limitations or, or specifications. Because just particularly, this looks fairly generic to me. And that's just my honest opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's all I have for now, until we get to something next.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahill. Any other comments from members of the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm just going back to the councilwoman's comment about the fire marshal. You know, we did send this to him for review back on July seventh. We never received a letter back one way or the other as to whether or not it was approved or denied. So we certainly do have to follow up with him. You know, it's very, very absolutely crucial that we have his approval. So, again, just wanted to tell you, that, that has not come back to us. So we do absolutely have to follow up with him on that. No, absolutely. And I, and I do agree with what she said with regard to the redevelopment plan. And as Ron stated as well, there really was no design standards, didn't even call out the type of materials here. I don't know if there's something that can be done. Like, I don't know if there's any enhancements that can be done to these buildings to give it a little bit more. Just to change that flat aside, perhaps, you know. But I'm, obviously, we're gonna defer to Mr. Winkler on that.
Any other members of the board who have comments on this testimony?
Madam Chair, Mayor Wall, I just want to add about, I'm sure the fire marshal will have a report, but I suspect that given the fact of the openness of this application right here, the fire trucks would be very easily to get around any, any side on this, on these buildings. Let's just put it this way, there won't be any, you know, access throughout both buildings.
Okay, should we open it up to the public now?
Yes, Chairman.
Members of the public, you've heard the testimony of Mr. Wick- Winkler, the architect on this project. If you have any questions regarding his testimony, would you please indicate by waving your hand or?
Right, our first one is the, the gentleman with the iPhone three again.
Okay, sir.
Okay, can you identify yourself?
Please identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Ed Marsh, one thirteen Wykoff Avenue, Piscataway.
Go ahead, Mr. Marsh.
This is the time for questions of the architect.
Yeah, is there any soundproofing between units?
Yes. Yeah, once again, it's, it's a two-hour wall, which is-
What does that mean?
It means that's a fire rating. It, it's actually a double wall that has two sets of studs. There's, it's, it's also twelve inches thick. So in the center is an inch and a half of gypsum board with, or sheet rock. And then there is a, a wood stud wall on one side and a second wood stud wall on the other side. And in between those wood stud walls is, is a sound insulation. So these are very soundproof walls.
Okay, yeah, I kind of agree with Ms. Cahill. I, I just think it looks like an apartment and, people don't have privacy or individual parking spaces in front of their units. I don't like it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other members of the public have questions?
Laura Leibowitz.
Okay, Ms. Leibowitz.
Could you identify yourself by name and address, please? Ms. Leibowitz?
You need to unmute.
Yep, I got it. Hello, this is Councilwoman Leibowitz. I live at one oh two Stratton Street South. First of all, I'm excited to bring in this type of housing. I think it's important. It's, you know, needed throughout our community and throughout our state. I definitely agree with Ms. Cahill about making the, the doors face forward. I think it just makes it look more enticing and less industrial. Some other suggestions, maybe to change up the material from section to section. I also, you know, similar to what Ms. Cahill was saying, maybe pull one forward, push one back. Also, there's nothing around the windows. There's no shutters. There's no window boxes. Things like that could probably also soften the look. And then I had another question, and I, I think it goes back to the first speaker. I know he spoke about the, the special system that is used for the trees that has the filtration and is great for the, for ground and water absorption, which I think is great. Is that something that could also be included in all of that planting? You know, and maybe make it a little bit more of a porous system? Which I don't know if this is the right time for that question or not, but those are my comments at this time.
Thank you. Any other members of the pub?
Did I, did I need to respond to that? I mean, the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so those, those units are, are, I think they're, they're eighty thousand dollars, seventy to eighty thousand dollars apiece. And they're, they're a structural box that was kind of designed to meet NJDEP stormwater criteria, so those are, those are specially designed for parking area runoff to absorb all the, all the typical oils, trash, things like that, grits that you might have coming off a parking lot. And, and, but, but those are, you know, they're, they're very expensive and they're, they're put in for stormwater compliance. They're not really something that you could put in, just, just put them in anywhere. You know, the fact that we're going from, yeah, we're, we're going from somewhere around, I forget the exact number now, but seventy to eighty trees out there, and we're gonna have well over a hundred trees. A lot less impervious coverage, drivable, uh, riding, vehicle riding surface when you, you know, get down to a formal parking lot instead of the big open gravel that's there. And, and quite frankly, going from, from a gravel area that, that's, that just, you know, you know, you know what a, what runoff from a gravel parking lot looks like. You know, it's, it's always got silt in it, to a, to a formal parking lot that's paved. There won't be any silt or anything running off and going through these water, water quality boxes. That's gonna help a lot. Otherwise, I mean, just the, the amount of landscaping and, and the green area that, that you're providing is certainly gonna be substantial benefit to groundwater recharge and, and just the general aesthetics.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who have any questions of Mr. Winkler at this time? Do you see any hands, Ms. Buckley?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So before we conclude with Mr. Winkler, obviously, we've listened to comments of folks on the board. We've heard from some people in the audience. Mr. Winkler, is this a situation where we could try to offer some facade enhancements? Such as mentioned, perhaps some shutters or some window boxes, just to gussy up the facade even further? Is that something you think you can work out with the applicant?
Yeah, we definitely could do that. We might, we might actually be able to put a little jog in the facade on the second floor. For instance, as you're looking at this rendering, and if you, you see the double gable, if, if we possibly could pull out that corner where the first gable is, pull that out of, a foot, cantilever out of foot. That would help break up that long expanse of siding.
So, so that, that you've just mentioned, that perhaps some shutters or window, uh, uh, window boxes. Yeah, you're prepared to take another look at the plan and perhaps add a couple of those items?
All of that, it just, and, and the information about maybe changing the colors on siding between the first floor and the second floor. We can do, do all of these things.
All right, so then for the, for the board, obviously, the applicant has listened to the comments. We always appreciate your comments and Mr. Winkles just indicated what the applicant would be prepared to do and he'll work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Morse, for bringing that up and, and for asking that of the applicant. And, you know, just to get back to understanding that there was no requirement here. But I do appreciate that because from my perspective, it's not about me, it's about our town and, and the types of buildings that we should hope to see being built. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morse, do you have another witness?
I do not.
Okay, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to belabor the testimony and, and quite frankly, of our very accomplished witnesses, but look, the site is, is an area in need of redevelopment. I think this is a wonderful project for sixteen age-restricted units with adequate parking. And, you know, I think the, the, besides that in and of itself, you're getting the benefit of a roadway improvement, a better public safety with the sidewalk and the properties being redevelopment, which is something that the town wants. And I rarely get in front of the board, and I come in front of you folks often with a site plan where I don't need some type of variance relief. And I'm happy to be sitting here with a, a site plan that's totally in conformity with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and your redevelopment plan applicable to this property. So that being said, we thank you for listening to our testimony and we respectfully request that you grant our application for approval.
Well, members of the board, you heard the testimony. What, what is your desire? Would you like Mr. Winkler to go back and come? Plan or what?
Chairwoman, you still need to open it to the public for comments.
For comments, okay, that's fine. Members of the public, would you like to make comments on the testimony you've heard from both witnesses tonight? This is your opportunity to state your comments on this application. You can do so by waving your hand and letting us know that you want to be heard.
Or if you're on a phone, it's star six.
Oh, star six on your phone.
No, and Chairwoman?
Okay, close to the public. What is your pleasure, members of the board? Would you like to take a vote at this time, or would you like Mr. Winkler to come back with an amended plan?
Madam Chairwoman, you could certainly entrust your township officials, Ms. Corcoran, and the engineers and planners to review those changes on their own and go forward with this tonight if, if it's your pleasure. And that would be the applicant's request. I mean, I can, as you can see, we're always proceeding in good faith. I am confident that between our, our professionals and your professional staff and engineers and planners, that we can come up with something that addresses some of the concerns to your satisfaction without, and so we request that you approve the application tonight with the understanding that we could add a condition that the applicant would work with the professionals to change some of the architectural features. that, uh, uh, we could add a condition that the applicant would work with the professionals to change some of the architectural features.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill. So I am going to, um, offer a, a although I'm the biggest complainer about this, they are in compliance. We need this kinda housing. However, uh, there's a couple of things and Mr. Caneely, um, I forgot to mention, but we do need to get on the record, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that getting back to my discussion about the, um, the barrels, is there an ordinance about how many feet barrels need to be away from each other? I know the garbage is being taken care of by this community thing, but if there is, we, we wanna make sure that that's recorded as well, and I could be completely wrong on that one, but, um, for approval tonight, um, I'm gonna offer this, but I'm gonna offer it this way. Mr. Morse is that we approve based upon, first of all, a, uh, you know, something in writing from our fire marshal that uh, they've looked at the site, uh, they can get in and out and that we have that. Um, and also too, that the applicant comes back with some architectural changes, although they're not required to. That's gonna be my offer, if anyone else wants to second it.
Okay, uh, to answer your first question, if, if there is such an ordinance with regard to barrels and location, uh, they would have to comply with that. If that changes because of what Middlesex County has done, then, uh, Piscataway Township's gonna have to revise their ordinance.
Thank you.
And, and secondly, uh, the Fire Marshal report, if you act in the affirmatively this evening, certainly would be a condition of approval. They have to obtain all outside agency approvals and that would be one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Caneely.
So I'm not sure I'm clear. Are you suggesting that we would need to come back before the board or that we could work out the architectures?
No, you'll work it out with our, uh, professionals, but it's a, it's a, it's an indicator to our professionals that, that you know, I'm not gonna be there, right? I, in good faith, as you said, Mr. Morse, which I do believe that that's what the applicant have is that they'll give some more consideration to the aesthetic of, of the building.
Yes, that's what we had just represented and, uh, we don't have a problem with the condition that we work with your professionals to uh, try to gussy up the architectural, uh, flair.
I appreciate that.
Is that a technical term there, gussy up?
I just invented it. It is now.
We need a second.
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, all second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, in anticipation of this vote tonight, since it was a fully compliant, uh, application with no deviations, uh, I talked to the applicant and at their request, we prepared a resolution for your consideration. Uh, it indicates that the applicant will satisfy all of the township professionals, so I think that that covers uh, not only their recommendations with regard to engineering and planning, but architecturally, they have to work with your professionals.
Do I have a second? Uh, do I, first of all? We need a motion. Do I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Councilwoman Cahill.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Always a pleasure to see all of you. Well, enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you.
Same to you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Bye.
All right, we need a.
All right, uh, we need a motion to adjourn, reminding ourselves that our site meeting is on August the twenty seven.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Excuse me, there?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.